Good morning and welcome to the Medina County Commissioners Meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our prayer for the morning, Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligations. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. So, we did not have a Commissioners Meeting last week, and so we have minutes from September 28th, 2021, to approve.
Move to approve those minutes.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion, corrections? Roll call, please.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. We'll move right into our resolutions. First up, we have Andy Conrad, our county engineer, and standing in for Andy is Dan Becker.
Morning. Nice to see everyone.
Good morning, Dan. Good to be seen.
Yeah, exactly. All right, I've got a few resolutions for your consideration. Now, the first one is the determination to close Fen Road between Deer Lake Drive and Waymouth Road. The second is the necessity to close Remsen Road between Old Waymouth and Stony Hill Road. The third is the necessity to close Chippewa Road between Lake and Garmin. We also have a resolution authorizing Medina County engineer to purchase one new model year mini excavator and a resolution approving or authorizing the Medina County engineer to purchase a new John Deere mower tractor. And then our weekly permits.
I'll move to approve the five resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Have a good week. And now, next up, we have Holly Muran, who is going to present resolutions for finance and for HR. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. So first, I'll do finance. There's 13 resolutions, the first being amending the appropriation measure resolution. Second is amending the 2021 appropriations by transferring appropriations. Third is expenditure adjustments for various funds. Fourth is authorizing cash transfer for County Home Levy Fund. The fifth is authorizing transfer of funds from various county departments to the print shop revenue line. Sixth is authorizing transfer of funds from various county departments to the gasoline rotary fund. Seventh is authorizing the purchase of 6,100 gallons of regular unleaded gasoline for the engineering center. The lowest bid was Kaoga Landmarks with $2.3229 cents per gallon. Eighth is declaring Medina County property as excess property. Ninth is approving the transfer of Medina County inventory between various county offices. Tenth is approving the Medina County Public Transit Contract with OHM Advisors for strategic planning services. The eleventh is allowing excess expenses for county officials. The twelfth is allowing claims and settlements of claims in the amount of $7,172,889.60 for the period of September 22nd to September 29th. The thirteenth resolution is allowing claims and settlement of claims in the amount of $580,478.56 for the period of September 29th to October 5th.
Move to approve the 13 resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. All right, next.
All right, next. So for our personal changes resolution, we have four new hires, two in sanitary, one in transit, and one in IT. Seven rate increases, two in maintenance, two in sanitary, and three in transit. We have three fund changes in sanitary, two leave of absence, one at County Home, and one in maintenance. A suspension in sanitary of end of seasonal work and maintenance, and two resignations, one in maintenance, or two, three resignations, two in maintenance, and one in transit. And our second resolution is approving the renewal of service agreement with Oswald Companies for the period beginning January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2024.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Next, we have Jeremy Sinko, our sanitary engineer.
Good morning, everyone. Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing change order number two for the Solid Waste District 8730 Building Renovation Project. That's just due to lead time on materials. And the second is authorizing change order number one for the 2020 Home Sewage Treatment Replacement Project, Contract A. We had an electric bid item, and the homeowner ended up doing it himself, so that changes just to take that into account, so.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thanks.
And welcome to Emily, your new hire there.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Okay, so we have a number of resolutions here to present for different organizations. Scott Miller is not able to be with us today. So the first resolution is for Job and Family Services. It's authorizing an agreement for legal services between Medina County Job and Family Services and Amanda Camilli. The second resolution is a resolution providing for the funding of the optional redemption of certain of the county's outstanding various purpose improvement in refunding bonds, Series 2009, dated June 30th, 2009, and authorizing and directing the call for optional redemption of those bonds. The next resolution is a resolution providing for the funding of the optional redemption of certain of the county's outstanding building improvement and refunding bonds, Series 2012, dated May 9, 2012, and authorizing directing the call for optional redemption of those bonds. The next resolution is amending Resolution 20-0596 as it relates to the payment of counsel for the defense of indigent persons, and this is essentially increasing the fee maximums that are allowed in the schedule. The next resolution is authorizing the leasing of a vehicle for the Medina County Sanitary Engineers Office. The next resolution is approving the appointment of Medina County Commissioner William Hudson, interim representative from Region 19, to the foundation established by the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding to receive and distribute proceeds from the National Opioid Litigation Settlements. Next resolution is authorizing agreement with Cunningham and Associates for the design of the Critical Infrastructure Project in Lafayette Township, and that is the bridge on Euclid Avenue. Next resolution is designating legal holidays for 2022. Next resolution is amending the board membership of the Medina County Transportation Improvement District, and due to statutory changes, we had to realign that board and identify the members who will be on that board.
I believe that's 10 resolutions?
I believe that's correct.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions on any of those? Roll call, please.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. So we have one other resolution here, and this is a commendation from the county commissioners in regard to the Waymouth Community Church and recognizing that church building as the oldest church building in Medina County. I'll just briefly go through the resolution. It's come to the attention of the Board of County Commissioners that a historical marker will be unveiled in a ceremony at Waymouth Community Church on October 10th, 2021, commemorating the facility as the oldest church building in Medina County. The church was founded in 1817 as the first congregational society of Waymouth, and the old white frame building was constructed in 1835. The church applied for and received corporation papers signed by the Speaker of the House of Representatives and by the Speaker of the Ohio Senate. The church was very active on the Underground Railroad. In the 1840s, the congregation took a strong stand with 14 proclamations against slavery and encouraged their northeast Ohio governing body to accept them. When this was refused, they left and joined with Oberlin. In 1920, the name of the first congregational society was changed to Waymouth Community Church. The original meeting house, with its simple and stately design set near the road, reflects the strength and endurance of the pioneer founders who built it. The church has almost all of its original materials and designs in place. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Medina County that the Waymouth Community Church is celebrated as the oldest church building in Medina County, and be it further resolved that the Board of Medina County Commissioners offers their congratulations to the Waymouth Preservation Society for their recognition of the church and thanks them and the Waymouth Community Church for preserving the facility for future generations.
I move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any comments? Congratulations to the church, and thank you for preserving. Roll call, please.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Public comment? I see no one here for public comment. We will move into discussion session. Jeremy, do you have any?
Just real quick, on the Columbia Road project where we have the riverbank stabilization and repair, we have four of the five easements done, and we're just securing the last one here, hopefully in the next few days. That's more for our access down into the river. Soil borings occurred on Thursday, so we are moving forward and making some progress there, so.
Jeremy, what is the general solution going to be? They just going to put riprap in, or how are they going to stabilize?
They talked about installing, putting a weir in, which would help direct, as they said, the river energy from the east side of the bank there. It'll help kind of center it in the river, so they'll do that, and then they'll put a lot of fill and large stone in there to kind of build that bank back up, so.
Interesting.
Yeah, so we're hopefully, construction, we're hopefully maybe looking in the next six weeks or so, seven weeks, I'm hoping so.
Okay, good.
Does it?
All right, thank you. Emily, would you like to come up and make any comments? No, you're, that's okay. Holly, or Stephen?
I'm ready.
Steve?
Yeah, actually, one, I guess, I know we've got various board positions opening up, and we're going to be advertising, I presume, for the DD board?
Mm-hmm, in the library.
In the library, right.
How many positions in the library? One? Can't remember if it's one or two. I think it's one on the library, two on Board of DDoD.
And I know we've got two for the Convention Visitors Bureau as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Advertise, all right. Just want to, I guess, make sure those are, the other, I wanted to, we are going to be having a meeting of Medina County Fiber, myself as well as the communities, with the townships, a number of townships are over in the LMRE territory on Thursday, talking about the Fiber Early Project and the ARP funding. We've asked for one trustee from each of those townships as well as our fiscal officer. It'll be, like I said, Thursday evening over in Chatham to discuss a proposal of how we can get it in there early with their assistance and using ARP money, so.
And what time?
At 7:00.
7:05?
But it's not really a public meeting, it's because there's, it's not going to be a majority of any voting board, so it just really is a private meeting to discuss and answer any questions. This proposal will be basically coming from Medina County Fiber and the communities.
Okay.
And in addition to our presence, hopefully Scott will be able to make it, but we'll see how that works. So anyway, at this point, yeah, we've got that. I wanted to bring up an approach under discussion with Scott and Denise Test regarding Senate Bill 52. That's the bill that provides, that gives us the authority to prevent utility scale solar and wind projects in townships. The authority of counties to do that was, came into effect yesterday, so, and there's a process for doing that. My proposal, and will obviously identify even more detail, my proposal is that we consider actually going through a process and designated that the entire, that all the townships in the county cannot build utility scale solar and wind projects. Now, these are 50 megawatt more, like Wattsworth projects are way under that, so it's, you have smaller ones. But in effect, the concept is, if you say no, you can go ahead and change your mind at a future date and go through a process of evaluating what the proposal is and set conditions. If you take no action, they can come in, and it's hard to negotiate with them to basically set conditions. In other words, it's a little bit easier to say no first and set conditions of doing it. So I think that's the proposal kind of come forward. Like I said, we've had some discussions, obviously the prosecutor's office will be involved, but the idea will eventually, obviously, to get the townships involved, have meetings with them to talk about that, as well through the Planning Commission. But the concept is, basically, since we have the authority, is early on, say, we're going to prohibit them, but that there, here's the process in order to do it. Otherwise, you're, like I said, there's no case law, there's no, because it's, this is all brand new, and to set up the standards beforehand might be difficult because you have had a lot of public input. So it might be just worthy, just saying initially no, and then start setting up the criteria of when you can say yes in appropriate areas, and what the criteria, and obviously with the involvement of the township and the residents in that. And if certainly you could set requirements such as drainage, road use agreements, as well as any kind of landscaping or buffering, could then be added as part of a qualified, okay, we'll support it, and you could then designate the area. And you can have smaller areas designated. So at this point, like I said, I'll just go back to my, I'll just say my experience with my father, it was always no, and then eventually you could get them to yes with conditions, so I.
Well, the one thing I would like to see from the townships is that if a township is a no, we don't want this, I'd like to see them actually pass a resolution.
Sure.
So that we have something that then we can say, we've got the resolutions from all these townships, wherever many there are, that are in opposition, so that, you know, 10 years from now, when the project comes up and the commissioners are faced with it, there's documentation of what the township had decided.
But I think it gives us time to also write the criteria needed to have the public hearings and the public input, to decide like, okay, in certain conditions, it might be warranted. Obviously, this involves landowner property rights, as well as the township's ability. So that's why I think maybe the approach ought to be, okay, well, let's be restrictive. Now, we're only talking about large scale. Literally, I know Denise Test and I attended last week, it was a webinar on public utilities, what's going on with solar, and with the decreased price, the cost of doing these, it's amazing how much they're going. And actually, they're, you know, some of the peak, they call it the moneymaker, month end of being in the summer, when there's high demand on, when the sun is shining and when it's hot, and air conditioning. But you have to have the infrastructure in place, the infrastructure being, getting onto the grid. That's the first analysis that is done in the process of evaluating this. So I think when you start looking at like, we may or may not, there might be certain areas in Medina County, but I think if our initial process is one of restrictive and then come back and say, okay, no, it makes some sense, then at least there's a process to do that.
Do you have any sense for how many acres would be required to hit that 50-megawatt minimum?
I heard of one project, I went just in from local property owners, they were talking like 500 acres, but they were talking about 1,000. They're talking about 1,000 acres. So you can have those range of projects depending on. But what has to first happen for many of these, what's going on with these companies, is they're evaluating the grid first and see whether they can come in and tap into it, and not have to build a larger infrastructure to support that. So I think Medina County probably is positioned for some of that, and actually, there is enough sunshine here. So I, we won't get wind projects, but we'll certainly get the solar. Yeah, but that's my proposal, that obviously, we can, as you indicated, obviously, you want the townships to weigh in on this, but I think Denise is working on a proposal for us to further discuss, and then just what we can do is set up a meeting with the townships and prosecutor and county planning and kind of walk through, it's like, okay, here's what we would like to, right now, we have the authority. We could have a project walk in through our door anytime, and it might be worth at least starting to go down that path.
Right. Well, I think it's better to be prepared before it's sitting on your lap.
I agree, I agree. Because it, once it starts that process, then you would have the citizen concerns about landscaping, buffering, road use, all this kind of stuff, and then it's more difficult if you haven't decided, then to set that as conditions. The people that set the conditions would be the Ohio Power Siting Board, where you're only, actually, the way the law reads, one commissioner and one township trustee would be part of the decision-making of that project. So you really have less influence because you've got all the other votes at the state level as to what those conditions would be. Here, now, obviously, the way the law is written too, people could still referendum, they could still referendum our decision, they could still referendum the process. So at this point, the people's right to referendum is still preserved, but I think it just makes sense to go ahead and start taking some time and setting up what criteria to, I guess, encourage that. One of the discussions too is, many of these projects have, follow the code regarding pilot projects, in other words, tax incentive. Basically, actually, they're tax abatements, and they have payment in lieu of taxes. And that is actually, if they apply for one of those, there is a cap as to how much they will pay the communities for the loss in taxes. So in other words, if they come in and build, they would actually have a higher tax liability than the tax abatement. So that's another question that's going to have to be, would have to be answered. My argument, or I would suggest, based on what I heard from the webinar, we would be in a better position to set what those conditions are for the tax abatement if we already said no. If we haven't, we wouldn't be able to, the code says you're capped at $9,000 a year.
That's what, the most you can, as in the pay in lieu of taxes?
As in pay in lieu annually, yes.
No matter how big the property?
Yeah, yeah. So the ORC, they've set it up, so obviously, there's a preferential tax treatment for these projects in terms of property tax liabilities.
But do we have the ability to decide whether to grant any tax relief at all from an abatement standpoint?
As I understand from the code, yes and no?
And I would think the schools.
Yes and no?
I would think the schools would want input on the abatement, too.
Oh, absolutely, they are, but it's already set in code. That's what learned in the webinar, so that's why my proposal is, let's say no first, and it's easier to say no and prohibit it, and then if they want to come in and we want to set the conditions, some of that could be negotiations of the pilot.
But most of the land, most of the land that would be considered for this is going to be in CAUV.
Yes.
To begin with.
But most of the, they do pay that, so, yeah.
But they'd have to pay the three-year recapture if they convert it.
Yeah. I understand it's part of the.
But the taxable value, I would imagine the taxable values of a solar field are significant.
Yes, and that's why they negotiate, that's why the state set a cap on it, to promote it, so I think.
I find it extraordinary that the cap is, does not have an acre restriction, like no matter how many acres, it could be 9,000?
Like I said, I just learned about it last week, so we need to do more research in that. My first, like I said, my first reaction is, no, let's go ahead and say no, and then we could, and actually, my question on the webinar was that if the commissioners, if they have already, if they have already said no to the property, could they, and as a condition of changing their mind, can they set a higher level? And that was, I guess, yet to be answered, so.
Well, like you said, there's no case law on this yet.
There's no case law. Is it like, okay, our condition could be, okay, is it going to be a higher impact at the schools or not? In which case, I know that although the RSC under that program set a cap, doesn't say that it couldn't be two pilots, payment in lieu of taxes. Yeah, and so that, but that is yet to be determined, but I don't think we want to, we don't want to be prejudicial against solar, but likewise, we also want to be cautious of the impact on the community. And I think that's, given this is all brand new, I'd rather at least, as you point out, address it early than wait until we've got one and then try to figure what our best opportunity, you know, what the best, worst decision would be, or worst decision.
That's the case may be, right.
Yeah, exactly. I'd rather at least have that, but I think we need to be discussing that. I think Denise, I was going to be doing more research on that. We may also want to get Economic Development Corporation involved in discussion on the pilot, since they're basically have been our experts on tax abatement. So I think that would be another party to involve in that, involving that if we're going to permit one, and they are going to have a tax abatement program, and they are going to pay, if you will, payment in lieu of taxes, how best to, I guess, negotiate that and make sure that our interests are protected?
Right.
So that's where I'm at on Senate Bill 52, so, okay. And that's all I've got.
Excellent.
We received an email from Amy on some ARP projects that may have time-sensitive issues, the Granger Water Project, not product and Housing Authority, the Highway Engineers Project. I didn't know, we've kind of postponed our scoring, waiting for some more solidified rules, so I didn't know what you guys wanted to do. Well, and she also added fiber to the MAMA, but we've kind of already discussed that. I didn't know if you guys wanted to discuss the other three projects or still hold off.
Well, we do need to make a decision fairly soon on those. They're time-sensitive, yeah.
Those three are time-sensitive.
And unfortunately, because of lack of a meeting last week, kind of behind, a little bit in that discussion.
So given the time-sensitive nature, could we talk about those three projects next week in discussion?
I'd be ready to talk about those three, yes.
Yes, me too.
All right.
Because I think we've already, I mean, as long as the rules are okay, we've already solidified our decision on fiber, so it's the other three that are really.
Some of us have.
Some of you have. Well, you.
Isn't the question, how much?
Yes.
Maybe.
Actually, with all of them, it's kind of like, yeah, how much?
We do have budget.
Well, you're having a meeting Thursday.
Thursday to talk with, yes.
So that would be good input for our decision coming up, because I.
I would agree.
I'm still interested in what LMRE is going to bring to the table.
I agree. No, no, I.
I am too.
Before, I'm willing to make a commitment, I want to know what they're going to do.
I absolutely agree.
That's my only reservation.
Well, the.
I agree with that reservation.
The ME with LMRE is until the 28th, actually. I mean, for solidifying that portion of it.
So how about if we hold off on that one, then?
Okay, right.
We'll talk maybe over that one.
Right.
And do the water project, Housing Authority, and the three on the email from Amy.
Yeah, do those next week, just talk about them.
But for the, at least for the township portion of it, this fiber early part, we'll have by Thursday, and I'll share this with you, once David Carrato finalizes it, and he's been working with Scott on it, finalize that with you, you all, we'll share that with you as well.
And I'm not sure about the Highway Engineer Project, but, you know, Granger already got some EPA requirements thrown at them for that project, so. And then skip from the Housing Authority, his is very time-sensitive.
Agreed, agreed. So I go next week, obviously, yes, I agree.
All right, so we'll talk about those three next week.
Yep, sounds good.
Anything else, Colin? I just make a quick comment about the One Ohio settlement. We had a Zoom meeting last week, invited all seven of counties that will be in the Region 19 along with us, and we had representatives from, I think, all of the counties. Some were prosecutors and some were commissioners. The general consensus is, is that the prosecutors will take the lead on developing an agreement that will govern our region. We don't yet know, because there's not enough framework to know what the Ohio foundation is actually going to look like. So we're operating in a bit of a vacuum, but the general consensus is that a council of governments form governance for our region is the path to go. So Mike Lyons had done an agreement on another COG, oh, just a year or so ago, so they're going to kind of use that as a model. You know, I think, again, there's a lot of unknowns about the, you know, the settlement is somewhere in $850 million range that will come into the overall state. 55% of that is going to put into the state foundation, and then there will be some governance at that level that will then distribute it to the 19 regions across the state, and then the regions will decide how they're going to disperse it from there. So it's very much a work in progress, and.
But I think it's wonderful collaboration that everyone showed up, somebody.
That's great.
It is really great collaboration.
Good. And I presume CCAO was there, Rachel?
Yeah, Rachel was there from CCAO, and, yeah, she was very helpful in just giving foundation.
Yeah, she's been, she's been following it.
Yeah, not everybody on the call really knew that much about it and were not involved in, and, you know, we're very fortunate with Forrest Thompson, the county prosecutor here, that he was a very active participant in the overall settlement, so. But there will be a lot more to come on that as we sort of rough it out.
That's good. That's good, excellent.
No, there's one more thing.
Yes, yes, Ron.
I spoke with the prosecutor's office last week about if we're unable to have a commissioners' meeting, given the county administrator's authority.
Oh, yes, yes, right.
To approve, review and approve weekly bills, and the prosecutor's office, they prepared a resolution and wanted to, you guys were okay with that, we could present that next week, given the county administrator's authority.
But didn't he say county and one commissioner?
No.
He's okay with just, just the county administrator?
The prosecutor's office recommended just the county administrator.
Just the county, okay.
And just to be clear, these have already been, well, budgeted, appropriated expenses, they are just, actually just the payment of the bills.
And approved by department heads.